Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 22nd, 2024 work session of the Penfield Planning Board. We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegraded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Hetzke.
Hetzke here.
Aiken.
Aiken here.
Burton.
Burton here.
Tidings.
Tidings here.
Sangster.
Sangster here.
Wyshar.
Wyshar here.
O'Connor.
O'Connor here.
Prinzing.
Prinzing here.
Perrigno here.
Okay, we have minutes from the August 8th meeting. Hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to review them. And can we entertain a motion to approve?
Tidings to approve.
I'll second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay. Thank you all for coming. For those of you who aren't necessarily familiar with the process of the Penfield Planning Board, this is, tonight is a work session. As such, it is not a night for a public hearing, and we will be covering internal business on matters before us, but there will not be an opportunity this evening for public If you would like to submit any comments on any active application before the board, you are welcome to do so on the town website.
Town website.
There's a, do you want to?
I think there's still, should be an active link, I believe, on the front page of the website under live meeting. You could submit public comments or going through the town's website to the projects under review, properties under review. At the bottom of the page is a comment submission form.
Well, look at that.
They can also be submitted electronically to planning@penfield.org or through the mail.
Yes. Okay. So with that said, why don't we start through our tabled items?
All right.
You need to speak into the microphone more, I think.
Okay. All right, it's working. Okay. Application number one, 47 Willow Pond Way. Sketch plan we heard on August 8th. Since the last meeting, we've drafted a sketch letter. If you'd like, we can go through that, if you guys are comfortable with the language.
Yeah, let's go through some of the major points for, for the record. So, yeah, and to be fair, or to, for foundational purposes, this, our board with this application is responsible for site plan.
Correct.
Comments and approvals.
Yep.
Not necessarily use approvals.
So, we made a comment that the applicant should continue to refine their renderings and elevations. Future elevation should include specific product colors and materials, and that when they do make an application for preliminary approval, to provide physical material samples. Any future submission will require detailed landscaping plan with a planting schedule. Should so all proposed plantings. Buffer planting should be native or naturalized plants to New York State, and that a, the landscape plan will be provided to the town's landscape consultant for review and recommendation. A photometric plan would be required, showing in foot candles the light level of all proposed building and ground-mounted lighting. Lighting should have full cutoffs, and they should ensure that it's not going to impact the adjacent residential properties through the use of fixture placement, fixture shielding, timers, and dimming.
Yeah, let's say minimal impact. I mean, that's a...
Yeah, so I think the...
Minimize impact.
Yeah. Yep. I think that's the language I use. Special care should be taken nature all adjacent residential properties are minimally impacted by any proposed lighting, including but not needed to.
Yeah, trying to reduce light trespass.
Yep. We acknowledge that the board has the ability to grant waiver from some dimensional requirements. It's unique for this district and the mixed-use district, outlining that the applicant, at least at this point in their concept, has requested a waiver from the maximum building height. Went through findings regarding the topographical features that provide additional buffering, establishing that they should be preserving as much of the existing vegetation, especially along Route 441 and the adjacent properties, as possible, and that if some of that has to be removed, that new vegetation through trees or shrubbery should be planted to replace those that are being removed.
Yeah, that, that comment should say replace in kind.
Replace in kind? Okay, I can make that change. The buildings are setback 55 feet from adjacent properties. That buffering should include minimally landscaping, but may also include fencing and other types of buffering that can be proposed by the applicant, and encouraging the applicant to work with adjacent property owners to find buffering that is mutually agreeable. And then noting that only a portion of the buildings would exceed the 35-foot maximum height, and specifically, it was architecture elements at the side and middle of the building. Trip generation study will be required with any future submission, and a full traffic impact analysis may also be required. Incur, requiring sidewalks along the entire property frontage on Willow Pond Way, acknowledging that they may be able to seek a waiver from the town board, and that the planning board would not look favorably upon a waiver request, given that there are sidewalks on either side. Sidewalks, requiring sidewalks from the proposed building development out to the sidewalks along Willow Pond Way to connect the development to the rest of the neighborhood. Full drainage report, including calculations, needs to be submitted. Multi-family housing is required to provide covered parking. So they either need to show covered parking in a future application or request a variance. And that any future...
It's 25%, right?
25% of the parking required for the units is the determination, I believe, of the zoning initiative here. So I think I've done the number. I think it's 48 spaces are required to have covered parking, which I don't believe they're providing at this time or were shown. There were a few garages, but it wasn't enough to cover that requirement. And that any future submission would require full engineered site plans that meet the town's design and construction specifications.
Okay. Comments?
So, just to start for the record.
Hmm?
What they're proposing here, although it deviates from previous approval, are all permitted uses, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And because you're suggesting that they refine the elevations and renderings, should we add a note that we're going to send that to our architectural consultant?
Architectural consultant. Yes, I can add that.
And with respect to the waiver, until we see these revised elevations and renderings, can't really comment on whether or not it's appropriate for the board to use our discretion to grant a waiver.
And, and I did include a note, I said that when I was reading it out. I did include that note that we're basing it right now simply on the elevations as proposed, and that if they make any changes, the board reserves the right to deny the requested relief.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Kelly, any comments on? Terry?
I was just, I was thinking of, I don't know, what we're going to make, if we can have more time to look at what you just went over. I mean, there's a lot of the take-in. I would like, you know, a little bit more time to look at all, all those things we just covered real quick there.
Okay. All right. Do you want to then propose we continue the review of the sketch letter until our next meeting, and give you a further opportunity?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we could, so in this case, you're looking to table pending further review and modification of the sketch letter for sending at the September 12th meeting?
Consideration at the September 12th meeting.
Consideration at September 12th meeting.
And maybe just make a note to them that if they'd like to proceed with any of the additional information or revisions that we're requesting, and they get it in by noon on the previous Friday, that we can review that as well.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
All right. So, do you want to make the motion, one of you?
I'll make a motion to table.
Tidings, second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay. Application number two, 978 State Road. It's the Sirianni Two-Lot Subdivision. So we have received revised plans and responses to comments from the applicant. Engineering staff, I know, is currently reviewing those plans. At this time, staff is comfortable that we can work through any minor engineering comments first approval. That said, staff has drafted Part 2.3 EAF, as well as a draft approval resolution.
Okay. This is Kelly's. You want to, anybody have any issues with this application?
No.
I'm good.
You're good? Okay. Kelly, you want to move for the authorization to sign the seeker forms, the environmental assessment forms?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Authorized?
Authorize the signing of the environmental assessment forms.
Tidings, so second.
Okay. Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay. And then the approval resolution?
Motion to approve the approval resolution.
Tidings, second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
All right. Application number three, 85 Sovereign Drive. So the zoning board granted the necessary variances in June. We did send the application to Bruce for his comments on the landscaping. He did provide a memo back to the board. His comments were very minor, and we can work through them with the applicant post-approval. So staff has drafted Part 2.3 EAF, as well as a approval resolution.
Yeah, so Bob's not here. This is his project. But does anybody, I mean, this looks like it's writing, any other engineering or staff considerations that we need to address? Are we comfortable with this?
No, I mean, everything, I think, is technical in nature. We can handle it through the pre-marine layers dangers if the board wishes, so we're also...
Okay. Can I entertain a motion to approve the EAF?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
The AFF.
Okay, Hetzke?
Tidings, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right. And the approval resolution?
Tidings to make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
All right. Application number four, 2520 Brown Croft Boulevard, Silver Maple Dental. So, we've started a sketch letter for the application. The major points of that one was consideration to look at potentially moving the curb cut to a location that would less impact the property owners across the street. That they'll need to do full engineering and site plan, that they should work out the easements early in the preliminary stage, since the stormwater management facility for the Federal Credit Union would be on the new property owned by the dental practice, to ensure that maintenance and construction of those are done and maintained.
Okay. I think those are good points to put in. Any others? Is this something that, I suppose, once we see a final architectural submittal, we can determine whether we need to get the architectural consultant to take a look at it or not. I don't think it's necessary at this point.
Okay. I'll leave that up to you guys. If you're comfortable, it is set pretty, it would be set pretty far off the road.
So what do you want to do at this point? Just, we're going to table it?
Send, send the sketch letter.
Okay, send the sketch letter. Okay.
Yeah. Good with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, I, I think it would be good here because of the nature of the impact of those...
Can you talk closer to the mic? Do you mind?
Because of the nature of the impact from traffic in and out, and headlights in and out, to those two existing residential driveways across the way, to, to make a statement about how that is in conflict with the town code.
Okay.
So, it's not just something that we kind of want to, I think it needs to be made clear to them that that's, you know, potentially a deal breaker.
Okay.
Is the town comfortable with that, though? I know, I mean, in engineering, and, because we, I think we discussed, weren't they going to get back to us anyways on that, when we questioned them? I don't know if you caught that.
Well, it's still sketch, so it'd be some...
They were going to investigate that as part of a future preliminary. Ultimately, Creek Street is a county DOT road, so if county DOT comes back and says, this is where we would approve a curb cut, you know, we'll have to sort of figure out either a middle ground or some, some way to make sure that we can agree with county DOT, because ultimately, it's their curb cut permit that they would need.
So we can still proceed and just wait for the county to respond to? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, I was, I was more concerned with just acknowledging from the public that, you know, this was...
Concerned.
Yep. And typically, we'll, we'll require also that any correspondence they have with DOT is provided as part of the application.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion to send the letter?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to send the letter. Tidings.
I'll second. Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right, we're moving through these pretty good. All right. So, application number five, 1820 Plank Road. So, the variances have been approved by the zoning board for the setback for the existing accessory structure. Staff has drafted Part 2 EAF and approval resolution. We did receive revised plans. Staff really had no comments on the application. Relatively simple subdivision. So if the board is comfortable...
It's another one of Bob's. Anybody have any issues? Mike, engineering is good with this?
Yes.
Somebody want to make the motion for the EAF?
I'll do it. I'll make a motion to...
Sign.
Sign the EAF.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Usually, you guys are competing for these opportunities.
Burton, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
He's busy. He's busy over here.
My knowledge.
And the draft approval resolution?
I will make that motion as well. Can I second myself?
I, I will second. I will second Michelle. He's still busy over here. I didn't realize.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay. And then, as noted on the revised agenda here, we did receive a letter from the team with Costco, that they have requested that their application have been withdrawn, because we have struck it from the agenda.
Wow. Okay. That's not small news. Okay.
So it was always...
There's a lot of work we don't now have to do.
They did leave open in their letter the ability to submit a new sketch plan application, so...
I think they said they were foiling all of the, all of the comments as well, too.
Yep.
So I would expect if they do come in with a new application, it'll likely address a lot of the issues that were noted at the hearing.
Yeah, we'll see what happens. This one.
So we do have two new business items.
Okay.
The first one is with the Wellsburg subdivision at 1345 Schucraft Road. So after the application was initially approved, the applicant came back looking to modify the approved minimum lot width and minimum setbacks. This would allow them some additional flexibility to add potentially a third garage bay onto the homes.
I believe it's only for certain units. It's not for every unit.
Yep, not for every unit. So they're requesting to get five-foot relief from the site setback as part of the 278 and a reduced lot width. They are maintaining the minimum lot size of 11,000 square feet for all lots. They are not expanding their overall footprint for the 22 lots, so they're not reducing the size of the HOA lands or Lot 23. Those are still restricted from further subdivision. It would just be some internal lot line movements between the approved lots. They would still maintain building separation for fire code. They've revised the grading and utility plan to show the shift in rear yard inlets, but they're still maintaining the drainage as was originally approved.
Okay. Any major concerns with this?
No.
Besides, I guess, potentially bigger tax revenue?
The homes may be a little bit bigger. They may, they may appear a little bit more dense, just because they'll, they'll be closer together. It'll be more similar to Barclay Park up off of 250 in terms of the setback between the homes. But there's, there's no major impact on, on our side, no.
All right. Discussion, board members?
So I got a question for Mike. We got a lot of rock over there?
Pardon me?
A lot of rock over there?
Oh, I believe they hit some rock in, by the pond area and stuff, but most of it is filled material for constructing in, so...
They're going to be blasting or rock hounding for any basements, you think?
We don't allow blasting for basements in the town. So they'd have to rockhound if they were doing basements.
So, what I'm getting at is that we get closer and closer together with all the problems that we've had community-wide on drainage.
Mm-hmm.
Is there sufficient room to build up soil to get an adequate swale, that the swale wouldn't recharge all the stormwater that we could convey that stormwater adequately in there? Or should we, should we ask them to maybe pipe the drainage?
Well, they are piping pretty much all the drainage. They currently already have the pond out there, and it's probably pretty much drained that whole area that was what to begin with. So, I mean, we are working with the developer to make sure that all the border houses are properly drained, so I think it's a, a great improvement. And he's already got an approval to build this. It's just he's now modifying it to add another garage to some of the units.
We're going to, we're going to make these units closer together, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they did update the grading plan to, to show modified swales between the properties that lead to the rear yard inlets. You know, we've, it's the engineering department's belief that they're adequate for providing that.
We get, we get any complaints for, for flooded basements in the existing neighborhood?
I'm sure we have in the past, because this was pretty much a wet, low area. So, besides, they, they're meeting the town code requirement of a 20% reduction from the overall rainstorm events, so they're already, you know, the pond's oversized to handle the extra runoff, so...
Yeah, I'm just, I, the only reason I'm asking is because of that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, getting into the basements and, you know...
Yeah.
What, what we can do to help those future homeowners.
We're always looking to help, so...
Yeah. Potential side effects.
Right.
Right. Any other board concerns on this?
Nope.
No? It's answered to your satisfaction, Jim?
You know, it's, Mike's got to hold their feet to the fire, so if, if he's good, I'm...
Oh, I will.
Just wanted to get that on the record.
All right. Okay. Somebody want to move to approve this change?
Tidings to make the motion to approve.
I'll second. Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
All right. Our last new business item, post-approval, we, the town was approached by the YMCA. One of the conditions of the approval resolution was to provide cross-access, a cross-access easement to the property to the south, to further the goal of the mixed use, to provide interconnectivity between developments. The YMCA would like to modify that language in that condition. I believe Pete has been in discussion with the YMCA's attorney on that language. We have provided that to the board, if you are comfortable with modifying that agreement. So...
I'll leave it up to the board.
I'm not sure who this question is for, one of you gentlemen, but what's the benefit to the community to no longer have the cross-access easement that was a part of the previous approval? How, how does, how does that benefit the community or the other projects in that district?
So, two things. So the applicant, representatives of the applicant are here. If you, if you would like to call them up, I'd leave that to you. But the, there is a concern, so I think there's a concern as to whether or not the project would be built if they were required to install the cross-access. But in looking, so in...
You're talking about the early childhood learning center?
That's correct.
Okay.
And because the Y has in the back, you have the fields, you, and, and, you know, the, whether it's daycare and day camp folks going across the parking lot to get to the back field. But in, in an earlier conversation we had with the representatives of the Y, one of the things they said was that they thought they would need to eliminate like 50 parking spaces or something. And then going back and looking at the, the easement that they attached to their letter that they initially sent, was the original easement for YMCA Way. Now, that easement on YMCA Way is, I think it's a 30-foot width. It was, it was required because, I, I think that when it was built, it had to be built up to town spec, because it was anticipated that the town would take dedication of that road. And that is, you know, it's a private drive there. It's, it's a road. And I think from the comments that were made about the need to eliminate the 30 spaces, I think that the applicant may be concerned that that's the type of easement or access that they were going to be required to install as a result of this condition. And so maybe if that is what they were thinking, it might be helpful to clarify, you know, what the planning board's intent here is. And it would seem to me, subject to your confirmation, that what you're really looking for is just to allow vehicles from the future development that could be developed to the south to access the drive aisles and the parking lot to basically get to the traffic light at YMCA Way. It would not be anticipated to have the same, you know, intensity of easement. It's really no different than the types of easements that the, the planning board is routinely required for, you know, Lloyd's Corners and the, you know, like the Monte Albano Plaza there, and other parts of town, where we've required basically to allow the neighboring properties to access each other's parking lots. Here, to get, you know, for people who want to turn north from the property to the south, just to allow them to access the light to minimize conflicts on Route 250. So, you know, if, you know, we also did draft, like, we negotiated a little bit on some proposed language if we were going to modify that condition. But thinking back to that, the meeting we had with them, I think that there might be a, a concern, I don't think that they were on the same page as what the planning board was expecting on that. And it may be helpful to clarify that. it may be helpful to clarify that.
So, first things first, I don't think it would be very fair to allow this applicant to come up and make a presentation during a workshop when we told everybody else in the audience that they couldn't speak regarding their application, so since this.
I guess I was intending if you had questions that you could ask them.
Okay, no, understood, I just, I don't, I don't want them to
That's right.
Feel as though we're, we're, you know, picking on them or denying them, you know, their due process, but, you know, we made that statement in the front like we sometimes do during a workshop, and so if they have information that they would like to present to the board, that the board could consider, but I'm not sure that your discussion really answered my question, how this benefits the community.
Well, the community, if, part of the answer is, they've said that if they're required to build the cross-access, that they, they may not go through with the project. And, and, you know, you have the town being known according to the applicant as kind of a childcare desert, if you will, so with respect to the, the proposed early childhood, I'm not sure exactly what, it's a daycare or an early childhood.
Early learning center.
Learning center, so.
Early learning center.
Yeah, so that could be the potential benefit is, you know, determination of whether or not that gets built. I don't know if that's gonna happen or not, if we're still gonna stick to the requirement to have the, you know, the cross-access. I, I truly think, and I may be wrong, but I truly think that it might be a misunderstanding of what the planning board's intent is by requiring that condition.
So that's actually a condition that was added by the engineering department, and.
Well, it's a common, really every site.
Exactly, exactly.
That's under consideration.
They add that to.
We require the cross-access easement.
But it's a requirement of the, of the mud to have cross-access.
Requirement of the code.
Right.
So this is part of the mud.
Yeah, so I think if, if we were in a public hearing proceeding this evening and we could get more information, or they wanna present something, that might be another issue, but I, I think. I think given, given where we are with this and this kind of a surprise where, you know, we agreed to something and now we don't want to, to adhere to that, I, I think it's, it's fair to the community to receive some, some justification, some kind of a compelling argument that could be submitted, and we can table this matter and revisit this, and so that, you know, we're not denying their request to modify the language, but, you know, there's something, some benefit to the community other than we won't do our project if you don't let us.
Let me ask you this question. Would it be appropriate for the planning board to clarify what the expectation is for the cross-access, 'cause I believe the condition is just to provide a cross-access easement? So what do you want?
I, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's our obligation to explain to an applicant why certain language is written into the town code. It's their consultant's obligation to read and understand the town code and to discuss it with the town planner or the town engineer if they're unsure or, you know, this could have come up, you know, some time ago, so I, I'd be more in favor of tabling the matter and if they would like to continue to, to make this request, to give us some, some reason that justifies a benefit to the community.
But I'm, I'm just asking if, if it would be appropriate to clarify that, and if they, if they think that they want this condition eliminated or to provide it to be at a future date, that would be something that could be considered at a later meeting, but what we're, what I'm talking about is, are you expecting a thirty-foot easement for a, a drive roadway like YMCA Way, or are you expecting a twenty-four-foot drive aisle access easement, which I think is more common, but it might, if you, if you clarify that that's what you want, it may, it might eliminate the need for tabling or any further consideration of this because they may find that that's appropriate, I don't know, but.
So.
Go ahead, A.G.
It, it does, based on your statements, it, it does sound to me as if there may be a misunderstanding or misinterpretation or something of what we are requiring. You know, the example, you know, you used the Monte Albion Plaza example. The, the purpose of this easement requirement is, as in the Monte Albion, hey, we go to dinner, we have dinner at Monte Albion, we wanna go to Don's Pub for a beer afterwards, we don't have to go back out onto two fifty to go back into Don's Pub. That's the, the point of that, and that's why we're doing this in the mixed-use district, as well as almost every other commercial district in town, if not every other commercial district in town. So I don't necessarily, I mean, my intent is not some sort of thoroughfare through the property, but this is the appropriate time for us to require the easement, and I don't myself see a reason to not continue to require that in a threat, I guess, if that's really what it is, that, well, we won't build it, okay. Don't.
Mr. Chair, I know you don't want presentations by the applicant, but I just wanna clarify what we actually have offered.
Excuse me. There is no, there is no public discussion this evening, sir.
We are committed to enter into a cross-access easement. We just think the proper time to do that is when you have a use that's for the southern property before you for review and approval.
The, all due respect, at the time, if and when it's ever actually exercised and it needs to be modified, it could be modified at that time. So let's say, put it on the plan, and go do your thing, and thirty years from now, somebody buys that property and it, and has a development, and the cross-access is not exactly the way it was initially on the plan, then we modify things so that it works for everybody. So, my experience, not saying that the Y is this way or your client is this way, but we're always safer having it there than not, and I'm not sure what the, if, I, I can throw it back and say, if the intent is to cooperate, then what's the big deal? So, we have had situations where, when you don't require it, if you look at our sidewalks, people always complain about, hey, these sidewalks go to nowhere, and that's because we don't have easements across people's properties to get the sidewalks, and an owner may change, something might happen, and it's a lot more challenging, so now is the time, in my view, to, and that's why we have these in, written into the code.
So it, it seems to me that we can, we can do one of two things here tonight. We can deny their request and ask them to do what's part of the current approval, or we can give them an opportunity to come back before the board with some compelling justification as to how this benefits the community that we can then review and discuss with town staff and, and make a determination at that time.
So if I'm not mistaken, Mike, so right now, if, with the current condition, what the applicant could do is contact staff and say, here's where we think the easement should go, this is the size we think it would be appropriate, just on the drive aisle, and that would be something that town staff can, can address, and they could add it to the plan as was contemplated in the original PRC memo?
Right, and then he'd get a map and description, and we would file it at the county and make sure that it's all filed and set. Now, for instance, on the Penfield Square, we abandoned nine easements that were on that property so they could put in those buildings. So, I mean, it's not like we do not abandon easements, we had a, there was drainage easements and there was other access easements through all that Penfield Square property that we abandoned so that they could get what they needed.
Okay.
So it's just a matter of show a location, I think, you know, and we can modify it in the future if need be, again, could be thirty years from now, so.
Could be never.
Right.
What is the specific action being requested? That we remove the condition?
Initially, I think it was a request to remove the condition, but they are willing to, I sent the language that was proposed, and I sent some additional changes to that proposed language if we modify the condition, so, you know, if you're not inclined to do that, you know, you could deny it without prejudice, and then they know if they wanna come in and have it modified and can provide more justification, they can provide more justification, or if they've been given enough information tonight to have a better sense of what the expectation was, maybe they just proceed and contact staff tomorrow and maybe this isn't an issue.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess I, I don't necessarily wanna come across as that we're, hey, hard and fast this way, because I do think that down the road in the future, if something needs to be moved or modified, it, we do that, as you just mentioned, and, you know, if we're going to deny without prejudice, I would like some type of language maybe in there to make that clear. Is that a reasonable request or suggestion? You know, as a reminder that.
I mean, it's up to you what you wanna do on that. I mean, the, the cross-access was included in the PRC memo, it was discussed at a meeting, and, and, you know, the, this board moved very quickly to get this approved, so I understand all that, and I'm not trying, I'm just trying to convey what the applicant's.
Yeah, we, we fast-tracked it through, yep.
You know, and they proposed to have language in there that said that the applicant agrees to come, you know, agrees to an easement in the future date at a location and scope to be agreed to by town staff and the applicant when the development is known to the south. You know, I will say, though, at that same meeting, the chairman of their board seemed to indicate that he was not really willing to put in an easement, so, so I was tweaking that language a little bit, we might be able to come up with another compromise, but, you know, but maybe what, if further clarification might be required from town staff as to what this current condition is, and it might be something, as I said, that could be, it might already be fine, so.
I'd like to make a motion to table this matter, to permit the applicant to provide some additional information that the board can consider, and to reopen it at a, a future time that the applicant is ready and the town has had an opportunity to review.
And so you'd be looking, that motion would be, maybe if you wanna specify, really what you're looking for is something on the nature of the community benefit to not having that cross-access installed now?
Well, I, I guess, I guess since all this discussion has taken place, it's not clear to me precisely what they're asking for. If they're asking to, for, to, to make an agreement at some future point in time, that's an agreement to disagree, so, you know, whatever we do needs, needs to be definitive, and, and there needs to be some, some compelling reason to, to do that, since we ask everybody else in, in these districts to comply with the requirements for a cross-access easement. So I think they've probably heard enough of our discussion to know that we're not entirely comfortable with what it is that they're asking and, and perhaps not even sure precisely what they're asking.
Well, if they're asking to just remove the.
Well, if they're asking to just remove, rather, because Peter, Peter pointed.
I've indicated to them that that's not something that, that I didn't think that this board.
Right.
Okay, so you suggested that there's maybe a couple of different things that they might consider that might be, you know.
I, I did provide to the board the language that they initially proposed, so that is kind of on the table, but.
Yeah, so anyhow, I have a motion out there, and I, I don't know how to define what it is that the board is looking for, but again, I don't think it's the board's responsibility to define that, I think it's the applicant's responsibility to tell us precisely what they're looking to do and, and how that benefits. What, what the board is, is doing is what we always do, is, is enforcing the town code with respect to the application, so.
Right.
I'm looking for a second.
And in future times when decisions that have been made previously or requirements that have been put in place previously that makes sense to modify, this board has been known to do that.
I'll second Jim's motion.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Tiding's.
Tiding's, aye.
Okay, I'll draft up language for a tabling resolution.
Okay.
Sign it out.
Okay, any other business?
That is all the business I have for the board.
All right, thanks, everybody, for coming to this special, specially scheduled meeting, and have a great rest of the summer. We'll adjourn and see you in September.